Jason. Jason.
Okay.
We're now resumed. I would like to introduce Ms. Becky Hammond. She's with Car Rigs in Ingram. And the reason I took a recess is I asked her to come and observe our meeting tonight. She is getting up to speed on everything, and I didn't want to just put her in the middle of an issue unless she could talk to it, you know, some. And she's here tonight, and she is willing to speak to this particular issue.
Okay. So I want to help clarify this issue. So included in your original 2016 budget is an overhead allocation for basically shared costs, any costs, the accountant, the attorney, anything that basically they serve all departments. And so you passed a budget that has that allocated, so the police department gets a piece of those shared costs. Each department gets a piece of that. That is something that is normally best practice in other governments. That's normally something that you do, just to try to get a good understanding of what the real costs are for each department. It's not something that you have to do. So if the council were to wish to amend anything and not choose to allocate it that way from an accounting perspective, then you certainly can do that. The other piece I would like to, I guess, clarify is when we talk about each individual department, there really is no department that's self-sufficient, because you have a large amount of tax revenues and other things that are for the operations of the city and for the operations of the general fund, regardless of which department you're using them for. So you're not going to have, you know, balanced budget within each department. So from an accounting perspective, it's how you choose to reflect your financial statements and show those amounts attributed to each department. But, you know, most of your departments operate at a deficit, and the general, you know, tax revenues cover those differences. From an auditing perspective, while we have line items for each department, we look at the budget in total for the general fund and whether you're over the 5% expenditures for that piece. So when we talk about these allocations, you're just moving the allocation from the general administrative bucket department to all the other departments that it should be associated with. And that is a best practice. Again, it's not something you have to do. It's similar to your insurance allocation, which I have recommended that you calculate the insurance allocation based on the most actual, the realest numbers that you can, which means the old arbitrary way that the prior, it was done in the past, didn't make sense, because we had detailed invoices and ways to allocate by square footage and allocate by what, you know, the insurance could be attributed to. And so my suggestion was that that be allocated based on real numbers, because that was a better allocation base and better accounting.
So Ms. Hammond, my question is, no matter what, if you change whether the allocation is there or not, the expense is there...
The expense is the same. You're just choosing to allocate it to the departments?
And the revenue... So if you're moving the expense, you have to move the allocated revenue with it?
Well, there's no allocated revenue with it at this...
Well...
Basically, what you're dealing with now is when you compare your budget for each department to the actual overhead. You've got a line item for that overhead allocation. Right now, those are pretty much in line, because we, the council, included that in the budget and passed that, and saying that the allocation was going to happen, the overhead would happen, and be moved to all departments.
So it's not a sensible amount to use somewhere else?
Correct. It's not a... It's a... You know, those funds were expended already on those costs. It's just whether you want to attribute it to the individual departments, which is best practice, or if you want to say, okay, my administrative department's just going to keep all those costs in there, and we'll show it that way, which is not in line with your budget. So then, you know, you'll have some budget, you know, underages and overages. But from an audit perspective, I'm looking, you know, spirit of the law is that it's the entire total general fund expenditures in total. So there really doesn't make a difference from my perspective.
So also, we're obligated to do, you know, as best as we can, we all are, you know, within reason, to follow the ordinance, the budget ordinance as passed. So it would be arbitrary to not do it in one spot.
Correct. So what your accountant is doing at the moment is following the original of what was budgeted. Obviously, that was an estimate, so you have to use the actual expenditures at the end of the year, and then you make that allocation based on a reasonable method. And so if you, as the council, choose that you wouldn't want to do that, then you can certainly, you know, direct to not do that. But it is a normal best practice in accounting to spread those costs that way.
I have a question about that. I was under the impression that Post-Suited Netterville had required that we do that allocation in the audit, and that they came up with a formula that then y'all decided wasn't fair, and you...
That was for the insurance.
That was for the insurance. That was the general liability insurance.
Okay, all right.
But they did tell us that they wanted us to do the overhead salary allocation. They left it up to us how best to do it, but they told us they wanted us to do something for this year.
Some sort of allocation.
Right. And you...
And those allocations, I would recommend. That is, you know, what most other cities and municipalities and parishes do. It's just a method for being able to track and associate those costs, similar to a business when you have cost centers and that kind of thing. But again, if it, you know, it's more procedural thing than a have-to, because at the end of the day, those costs are, you know, as long as they're budgeted and in total, they're, you know, they meet within your budget, then there's no violation of the law.
And Ms. Hammond didn't misspeak. She said accounting and attorney fees were allocated based upon this overhead, and we are not in there. It is strictly the admin department.
Those are salaries. Okay. I apologize.
I know you looked at it, but you looked at it too much.
I'm still trying to get up to speed on everything.
Yeah, the audit starts Monday.
Did that help kind of clarify a little better?
And tell me if I'm asking you to say something you're not ready to speak on, too. Also, best practices. So when you put a budget in place for a year, a budget is an estimate, and we know that there's going to be fluctuations, and to get perfection is near impossible. What is best practice for end of year before, like the December 31st?
Well, your best practice is to have a mechanism and almost, you know, at least quarterly would be my recommendation, that you're looking at those numbers and doing budget amendments at that time, and then do a final kind of look at the numbers, usually prior to the audit would be the accepted practice, and amend that. Now, again, that is totally the council's decision. If you choose not to agree or bless something that happened, that's, you know, that's entirely up to you and is part of your legislative duty.
Ms. Hammond, I have a question. Is it best practice for us, as the governing body, trying to balance budgets, to get a run rate on a regular basis?
Yes.
Because we do not.
No. And I've actually spoken to the mayor and suggested that, and I understand that she's got a plan in place that, you know, every meeting, every monthly meeting, I've suggested that, you know, that y'all need to have financial statements and...
And we've discussed, you know, where we are.
Right. And so I will help any way I can to push that, to make that happen. But you need that to be able to make these decisions. Then you can look at your budgets, and you know when you're over and under, and can ask those questions that you would want to ask.
We haven't received that in, I don't know, a year and a half? Two years?
You got a run in October.
So could I understand what needs to be put in place for us to get the run rate? Because the expenses come in, and there's an allocated budget, and you print a report or you electronically send it to us. I mean, the accountant has to know, and the mayor, what's happening in the city on a monthly basis. The clerk pays bills.
I mean...
We pay the bills at the end of each meeting.
Right, right.
We need to get the run rate.
And I would say that, I don't know if it's because we're waiting for an accrual basis accounting, which I think you could, you could go ahead and treat it as a cash basis and at least give you this is on a cash basis, as long as everyone understands that, especially end of the year. You know, accruals are certainly important, because you're going to have later arriving invoices and expenses that aren't captured in that number until those accruals get made. But, I mean, I wouldn't see why you couldn't...
Yeah, software system.
I mean, Ms. Lulu, is there any reason why we couldn't at least get a cash accounting out of the system?
We are on a cash accounting basis, and we've tried printing out the N code reports as they are. Problem is, the payroll is not up to date with that, because the payroll is on an accrual basis, especially all the liabilities. So it gives such a false impression as to how much money is left in anyone's department that it gets confusing, even though we...
So it was unreliable from that perspective?
Right.
And it could be misleading? But it's something I'm certainly willing to take a look at to see if there's a different way to facilitate that, because certainly that's, you know, as council members, that's absolutely something that you would want to have on a monthly basis, even if it's two months old, but you'd get it every, you know...
Right.
You know, to...
And we've discussed...
Because we do have a bit of a lag because of the resources that we have, but, you know, that you would be getting something on a consistent basis.
Yeah, we're flying blind. So is the chief.
But you have to remember that that's not the end-all, be-all, so you can't quote it and say, you know...
Hey, we...
But at least it would give you an idea where you're at.
We're totally reasonable.
Right. No problem.
You just need to get an idea, right?
Yeah, absolutely. So I think that's, you know, doable. There's probably some hiccups that I, you know, can help give some ideas on, and we'll move forward.
And I think some, you know, I don't want to belabor this, and I don't want to get into any elaborate discussion about how many runs and different things. We can address that, you know, separately and go through that.
And even if there's something in particular that we have to leave out, or that maybe is a little more delayed, you know, you can qualify that, and at least you'd still have some information to make decisions.
Yeah, but ninety-five percent of your budget, you can do a starting balance, encumbrance, plus what's been expended, and that gives us what we need to operate with.
Well, and I don't think you're quite on an encumbrance basis accounting, but...
The software does it as long as...
Does it do it?
As long as there's a PO in.
Yeah. So then, yeah, even if you didn't get the invoice, you'd at least know that that's out there for spend.
Right.
And then encumbered.
And it goes to us functioning as a whole, that budgets get passed in time, and so that we can put a budget in, into the computer software system. Then you can apply the numbers and then have a budget, you know, that we started a budget in 2016 without a budget in place.
Well, and I think with monthly financials, I think the council would...
There you go.
I'm sure be in a better position to want to make those amendments.
It's much easier to pass a budget and feel comfortable with finances if throughout the year you're seeing it on a regular basis. If you all of a sudden see it in October and you're asked to pass a budget, it doesn't make you feel secure about the decisions you're making, so then people ask questions, and then it gets belabored, and it goes month to month of trying to obtain information. That's what happens.
Yeah, you always got a revenue and expenditure report, every month for the prior month, just like you get the check register.
But is that in total, or is it by department, or...
It's each line item on the budget, for every department. It's pretty thick, but every month you would get, for the council meetings, the council would get a revenue and expenditure report that the computer software generates, you know, and for the month, for the prior month.
So we could get something like that, and if Ms. Lulu wanted to make the caveat that the...
And let you know what line items might be problematic.
Right, the salary and wage isn't correct, then just let us know that, and so we have most of the right numbers, right? You get a feel of what's happening.
Absolutely.
Okay. That's a good start.
Yeah.
And I'd like to say, let's just put the past behind and move forward in a, you know, positive direction and just get it done, give you the information that you need to make these decisions.
Do we have any more questions about what the...
First of all, for the record, I respectfully disagree. First, Harrington has an elected police chief, and as an elected police chief, I am responsible for my budget, separate from the mayor and the other departments. Also, it's kind of hard for me to see where I'm at when I don't get reports. Last year, October 1st, I got a run or a check balance that went through July. Then we got one for November of 2016, what, in March? And then we just recently got one for the end of 16. We're in the middle of, almost in the middle of April, and I still don't know where I'm at in 17. There was another, in one of these audences that the mayor proposed, saying that if I, the police department is over budgeted with 5%, I have to report it. Go back and check the law. It doesn't apply to the police department. If I'm 5%, I mean, 5% under budget, or any, or more than 5% under budget. If I'm over budget, I have to report it, not if I'm under budget. These monies, like you said, November 30th, I've got $505,000 sitting in my account. And then after it's all over with, I got $79,000? I don't buy it. I didn't spend $300,000, something thousand dollars. And then Ms. Lulu's told us before, we want an accrual method. You just said we want a cash method. Which way is it?
It's a modified cash method. It's mostly cash, but the payroll is accrual, and it is all legitimate government terms.
But you've always told me it's been on the accrual method, and that's why we couldn't get up to date financially.
The payroll.
Would you have a specified payroll before?
Payroll is the largest.
Yeah, that's the biggest expense. And it's kind of hard to see where we're at when we don't get... I don't understand. Everything's computerized, and it's put in your computer, and your pay, and your paychecks are issued. Why it just didn't come out with a balance? I don't know what's so hard about it.
The salaries are in there, but the, all of the liability insurances and health insurance and all of those pieces are put up into the balance sheet, because it's a lump sum taken out by the program and a lump sum paid by the, by us, by a check to the providers. Then we have to put that into Excel spreadsheets based upon all of the employees, how much money they actually were withdrawn from each paycheck, and then that has to be put in as a manual entry. And it takes time.
It's not... People, we have a $6 million budget. This is not a Fortune 500 corporation that's got billions of dollars. This is 2017. I'm just, I'm lost. I don't know. I don't understand why it takes me three and four months, and the council, too, to find out what we have financially.
We actually, part of the discussion is then how to streamline. One of the discussions that you have brought up is what about automating payroll? That has been a very, very brief topic that we have very lightly touched on in a very, very casual way with Ms. Hammond, and it may assist in making things go smoothly.
Why would it be different if we have somebody else do it or we do it? It still goes into a computer. It, you got $10, you spend nine, you got a dollar left. I don't know what...
No, the companies allocate it all out by line item, by department, and they dump straight into the N code for us. We wouldn't have to touch it. They pay the insurance companies for us. Paychecks would be direct deposited.
I still don't understand why it's so difficult. And again, I still disagree with the balance, having $505,000 November 30th, and we can't know what we spent in December that brings it down to $79,000. That's my question.
We can...
You can print a general ledger detail, and it'll show you every item that hits every line.
We can print that detail and get it for you.
And why won't you have access to? That's what we're asking for, if we can have access to all that that pertains to the police department. We don't have, we've been asking. It's like a show game, folks.
Greg gave them access when he paid.
Huh?
The N code guy, Greg, he gave them access when he paid.
I think they gave them access, right. So we'll have to check on...
I mean, if the chief is paying 35% of Ms. Lulu's salary, can someone go sit with the chief and make sure that his N code access is administrative rights and that he can see what he needs to see? Can someone help him do that? Can someone help him do that? Please answer.
I did it once, but we can do it again.
They'll do it again, chief.
Can I... Chief, I just, it was, it's interesting that you came, just as you were talking about the power of the police department and its budget, I was reading a case, I swear, at the very moment you were saying that. I was reading a case, it's called Dugah versus City of Brobridge Police Department, and it deals with the issue of whether the police department is its own separate legal entity as opposed to the city. And I was verifying what I already knew as a longtime municipal lawyer, but I want you to hear what the court said. Brobridge is a lawless and act municipality and operates pursuant to a mayor, board of aldermen form of government. The mayor of Brobridge is the chief executive officer of the municipality, while the legislative powers of the municipality are vested in the board of aldermen. The chief of police, as an elected official, is responsible for law enforcement in the municipality and is charged with the enforcement of all local ordinances and applicable state laws, requires the police chief to make recommendations to the mayor and board of aldermen for the appointment of personnel, for the promotion of officers to effect disciplinary action, and for the dismissal of police personnel. Although by law, the chief of police has plenary power with regard to law enforcement within the municipality, and in the operation of his department, the police department, but in the operation of his department, the police department is dependent on Brobridge in all other respects. The police department's budget is appropriated by the mayor and board of aldermen, and notice that it says the mayor and board of aldermen, it cites the revised statutes. And pursuant to RS 33423, the chief of police may not hire, dismiss, promote, or discipline personnel without the approval of the mayor and the board of aldermen. State law is silent on whether the police department has the capacity to sue or be sued, and no local ordinance was introduced that the police department has granted this capacity. Rather, 33361 vests all powers, rights, privileges, immunities, authorities, and duties in the municipality, and it, in the municipality, and it authorizes it to exercise any power and perform any function necessary, requisite, or proper for the management of its affairs, not denied by law. So, you know, what this case is telling us is that the budgetary power is reposed here. It really doesn't reside within your department. It starts up here. So, you know, I think maybe, you know, your appreciation of the department's power over its own budget is perhaps not exactly...
I'm not responsible for it, is what you're saying?
It's not, it's not exactly the case.
My question is, you say I'm not responsible for the budget?
No, you get to, you get to propose and make your case to the council and the mayor as to how it should be appropriated. But they are the ultimate disposers of what happens in the city.
I have no problem with that. I've served on the council. I'm aware, and also aware of Doyle versus City of Harrington, where the police chief has control over his budget, what's allocated there.
What's allocated.
I understand it. And I'm not saying, and I never questioned that.
Okay.
What happened last year, before budget hearings, the mayor, and I said this at a previous meeting, the mayor said she was doing the budget for us. I said, that's fine. I'm responsible for the police department budget. I'm doing my budget, my proposal. It's up to the five council members to decide what they can do. They can take the mayor's proposal, my proposal, or neither. And it's kind of what they did. That's fine. Whatever they allocate to council, that's what I live with. But all these other expenses keep being put on us. I mean, 35% of the mayor's salary, 35% of two people in City Hall, 50% of HR, when we do a lot of the HR work, we bring it over to City Hall? I mean, we can start charging every call we go to in the city. I mean, we provide a service to the city. And I'm being a little facetious when I say that, but that's our duty, is to provide services, like City Hall is to provide services for city government. That's why they got a finance department, a regulatory department, et cetera.
It's a, it's an accounting practice. It's not, it's a way to find out how much each department costs to operate. And just like in a corporation that has one human source department, and depending on the size of your department, you get charged a piece of human resources. Payroll, depending on what amount you use in payroll, each department, if there's 100 departments, 1,000 departments, you get charged a piece of that. It's a basic, it's an accounting principle. It doesn't mean that you're getting, per se, a bill. It's moving it on a budget in order to show it. It's not a bill, per se, that you're getting charged every time you use something in the city, or...
But you were allocated money for it, and then we gave you the expense. It wasn't like you didn't have an allocation, and then we did it.
Well, let me remind you, last year, when this happened, I sent you an email saying, show me, is it a law? What makes this happen? And your reply to me was, we'll wait and see when the new auditing firm comes in.
And we did, and she agrees that it is a best practice.
But it's not mandatory. There's no law, there's no ordinance, there's nothing saying it has to be...
There is an ordinance in that...
No, no, there's nothing saying it has to be done.
Wait, wait.
There's an ordinance that says it has to be done?
There is an ordinance that is passed called the 2016 budget that says it has to be done. And we put up amendments so that when we had spoke, in order for me to keep, I said, you want this taken out? We put up an ordinance to take it out, and it was not seconded, and it was not passed. Thus, we are still obligated on that prior budget. I attempted, we attempted to do what we could in order to make you happy, basically, and I think...
Ultimately...
Did we do it more than once?
You know, make me happy. How can I run a department when four, five, six months later, I find out where I'm at financially? Do you run your house like that? I would think not. And again, November 30th, 2016, $505,143 sitting in my account. Where did I spend $300,000, $300, something thousand dollars in one month?
We're happy to get the journal entries to you.
How quick.
We can try and have it, you know, Linda, I don't want to speak for you.
Well, I'm coming in Saturday to prepare for the audit on Monday. I can prepare for him instead.
That's the prob, but that's the problem.
We're only one person.
That's what I deal with daily, folks.
Okay. It's painful. Moving on. So can we say that you prepare for the audit, because we have a time crunch on Saturday, and after that preparation next week, that you can get those journal, get that information?
That sounds good.
Chief?
Sure. I have nothing on.
Any further council discussion? I just want to reiterate very briefly, and I don't want to go off on it. There were technical issues with the ordinance that was passed that made it basically impossible to implement and to discern. It would require us reading the minds of the legislature in order to apply it. And also, it was doing it across years, which we couldn't do, correct? Okay. So that we just, it's unapplicable. We can't apply it. That was the problem. So do I have a motion to proceed with the vote, and this would be a vote to approve the ordinance that passed, not approve the veto, but approve the ordinance as passed? This requires four out of five votes. Do I have a motion to proceed?
So just that I'm clear, we are, we have tonight first reading of the correction of this ordinance that was vetoed, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we have something that we're doing first reading tonight to correct the structure of the one that was vetoed.
Correct. Right. I promised the chief that we would put an ordinance to get him the money he needs in his, to proceed with the purchases he requested.
I just have one question.
I think that's basically...
Well, that's my question. We're about to vote on something, whether we're going to override it or keep it, but we have an ordinance set up for first reading that we can't, and it's really, I'd like to discuss, if we can, this ordinance that's supposed to be correcting before we make the vote on the one that was vetoed. If, I mean, I don't know, do we make a motion to maybe change?
It's still technically talking about this one, if you're...
Right, but I guess some of my questions pertaining before we make this decision, I would like answered about the one that I know is only for first reading. I just want to make sure that the numbers, when we discuss this, was...
You want to restate your question, just so that we can have it for the record, so it kind of comes for...
For the record.
Okay.
Well, I didn't mean it like I was...
No, no, I understand. Okay.
I see some that people can understand.
We had an ordinance that was passed that we're being told was not done in the correct format. It was vetoed. We have an ordinance that's coming up for first reading. I would like to discuss that ordinance before we make the vote on the one that was vetoed.
So you feel comfortable with not overturning the veto, because you're comfortable with the new first reading ordinance?
I just have some questions about the one that's up for first... I just have some questions about the one that's up for first reading. And I don't, I mean, can we discuss-
What's your question?
What's my question?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, just like I stated before.
I just asked you to restate it so everybody will kind of catch up.
That's okay, that's okay. No problem. So, in the ordinance that's up for first reading, I'm just confused with the numbers. So, we had an ordinance that was vetoed that said that there was money coming out of the police department's budget of approximately 191,000. My understanding was that was from 2016. We were moving it to 2017, 191.
Capital.
Okay?
From operating to capital.
Putting it into capital.
Correct.
And the funds of the 191 was from various lines that were underspent for 2016. So, those were taken, moved into new lines for 2017, okay? Towing 191. We have an ordinance here now that is 105. So, I guess I'd like to know where it went from 191 to 105. I'm assuming, I guess, maybe some money was spent, but I'd like clarification. And again, this ordinance says where the money's coming from. It says transfer from, transfer to. This one just says we're increasing expense line items by 105. I'd just like to know where it's coming from. But when I read in it, it says the capital project budget is being amended. So, I'm looking at it as, are we taking 105,000 dollars?
Looks like we're taking a capital to give to him.
Well, I mean, and I know, Becky, I'm not, I'm just, you're, okay. Okay, but let me, let me just finish, and you can answer. So, I don't, I don't understand. If the money was in the police department's budget at the end of 2016, and we're taking it and making it into 2017, why are we taking it from capital?
Can you roll over money from one year to the other?
First of all, one thing you want to remember, when you pass a budget for 16, once you finish out that year, your, your overage or your underage rolls into your general fund balance. When you do 2017, it's like a reappraisal. It doesn't roll, you can't mix years like that. You reappropriate.
So, where did the money go from 16?
The general fund. So, now, the other piece to this is that that was done prior to the final numbers, before some accruals were made, those kind of things. So, that was not the actual amount at the end of day. Now, what I will preface is, you have money in your capital budget, okay? Whatever you want to approve to give to the police department for the capital expenditures that need to be made, that's completely up to you, the amount, as long as you're not violating, there's not any restricted amounts that are in the capital budget for other purposes.
This is money that he had left over from his, not pulling, not pulling from capital.
Okay, so-
We don't want to pull from capital. We want to pull the extra money that he had left over to put into his capital.
It was 191,000 at that time.
Wait, 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 wait.
One person at a time.
It was 191,000 at that time. It is now for, for the police department, okay?
Wait, but Becky, per what was written that they determined was the 191, because the 191 included the allocation, insurance, et cetera, different things.
Not being, right, not being used. For instance, you got 57,000 on there that was an allocation, that the journal entry for that got made after that date, and so that really wasn't an under, under-budget line item, once you finally got all the numbers in there, okay? So, at the end of the day, your real-
Wait, wait, hold on.
Let's please have one at a time.
Your, your real difference is 79,000, at least at this point. We think that that's a good number unless we have audited entries that, I won't know until we get in and do our, our job as auditors.
But we don't know that 79 is accurate.
Okay, and that's something, again, we're going to be looking at those numbers. We can help verify that, and it may increase or decrease. So, here is my suggestion. The police chief needs approximately 105,000 for the three cars, or, or do you have a number that you need for the three cars?
No.
And that's, the 105 is something that we want to, with the projected balance, before
we got more figures in at the end of the year. And when we spent with you, you said it was okay to take operating funds from 16 and put it in 79.
No, I did not say that. I said that you would be take, you could allocate whatever you needed to from a capital perspective for whatever the council wants to pay for.
When Ms. Wheeler and I met with you and Philip-
Yeah, when we met with you, we specifically asked that question, because that was obviously an issue.
Now, again, if you've got general fund balance-
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
You can pay whatever you want, like, you could put it in your regular general fund and do it that way, too. That's up to the council. Whatever you want to amend and allocate, you can.
What he wanted to do was take his leftover general fund, move it over to a capital fund where he can use and spend it as he wanted. Whereas this, the ordinance that is looking like it's coming up, it's saying that we're going to take our capital funds and deduct 105,000 to give to the police. And that's not what, that's not what we're looking for.
Then what we need is a transfer from the general fund for the, for the other side of it.
Bingo.
But you technically don't have the balance in the general fund to do that.
Oh, it's somewhere. With $10 left over at the end of the year, doesn't mean that the city has $10 left over at the end of the year, which is why you have to reallocate and come up with a new number for 2017. And if that means starting that with a higher projection because there was more money left over from 16, and you give it to the police chief, that's what you choose to do as a councilman. It's, it's very, it's that simple. Does that make any sense to you?
I guess I'm just confused because when we specifically-
You have separate departments or however many departments.
So, the way, the first-
It was gone from operating to capital.
I, I get what you're saying, that you would, you call it a rollover, but it's not-
Wait, Chief, Todd, would you speak into the microphone?
What you're calling a rollover is not necessarily, we've asked for this to be done going back when you were a councilman, Chief. What you're asking for a rollover is not necessarily a rollover because the city has more than just one budget. They have all these different budgets out there. Because you finished with X amount of dollars left in your budget, doesn't necessarily mean that the city ends up with a surplus. The city can only go based on their surplus for what they actually have on hand. You may finish with a $300,000 surplus in your account, but the city's ending balance may only be 200,000 as a surplus. So, they can't give you 300,000 because they don't have it. You see what I'm saying? That was, that was a misjudgment in what was budgeted in 2016. Now, if you didn't spend it, and you feel like you want it, and this council feels like they want to give you that 300,000, then in 2017, in their projected revenue, they would project that revenue to give to you above and beyond what you would get. But it's not necessarily a rollover because the city doesn't necessarily have it. Did that make any sense to you?
I think so. Though in 2015, after the books closed, they put, with 35,000 liability insurance on the police department, we were under budget, we wanted to be in over budget, they didn't give us the revenue. So, don't tell me it can't be done. It's been, it's been taxed several times.
I know, I get that it can be done, but what I'm saying, though, is, is for budgeting purposes, it's not like they can just roll it over and take from what you had and just stick it. It would have to come from somewhere, and if that's out of capital, then that's where it would be.
But in two, but just so you understand, in 2015, that liability, that was a journal entry made by the auditor, not by the council.
And bottom line is, is December 31st of 2016 is a drop dead date for when you can spend money from 2016. If you go to purchase something in January 1 of 17, it comes from 17. You have to reallocate those funds.
All the money goes in the general fund pot all over again.
And then you reallocate that however you want. Now, if you want to give the police department or the police chief another 105, 130, or 600,000, that's your choice, and you have the right to do that.
The correspondence when the mayor called me-
But you have to do it based on the revenue that you project or have.
But when the mayor called me, that I have a problem with this veto, and it's in writing, because I filed in an email, said, "You'll get it. We just have a procedural the way the ordinance was written." The way they've written it, it's all together, it's altogether different to what I was led to believe.
I'm not trying to get in the middle of this argument. I'm just trying to simply state what, what I've come to understand over the 30 years of, 25 years of sitting right here.
I think what Becky was going to start to say is that, that we don't have 105,000 in the general fund, and that's why we have to take it out of capital.
You have it in the capital fund, and if you choose to use that for capital purposes.
Well, why, why?
Well, when I spoke to the mayor, and I, and I said, "I had no problem," and you can pull the emails, when we discussed it, it was going to come out of operating from 16 going to capital in 17. It's in writing, I copied the comments.
No, that's not what the email said.
Oh, oh, okay. No, again.
Well, what it all boils down to is, just like Chief was talking about earlier, they had a lawsuit with the Chief of Police years ago against City of Harahan. Whatever he has left is up to his discretion, and he wants to move money around, and that's what we did in this original one. We moved it around, where we took that extra money he had and put it into capital form. But then we were told that this wasn't right, this procedure was wrong, and you're coming with this, saying that it's strictly just coming for capital. So, our capital, our capital budget's going to be diminished, rather than moving the money like we wanted to originally.
But the only way you could move it is if you did a transfer, which means you have to take that line item from other things that are happening in the general fund for 2017 to make all that balance.
Therefore, that's why, that carries, so that's why we asked the question, you don't see the transfer.
I don't, and I, and I guess I don't understand where the overage per se in his department from underspending really went, so-
Mr. Bureau.
So-
I just want to ask you to look up the Doyle case.
I'm looking it up right now.
I guess what I'm getting at, no, well, well, because we interrupt people and, you know, so.
Are you good?
If the, the police department is underspent or under budget, X amount of dollars, but the fire department is overspent, we talked about this. So, basically, by the chief underspending in his department, being ultra-conservative, he loo, not, I don't want to say loses, because we, I mean, Becky, I'll be honest with you, when Craig and I met with you, I know we specifically talked about this, and when I left your office, my understanding was whatever money the police chief had after 2016, he could reallocate, and we can put it in a line for 2017.
Which right now is only 79,000.
Okay, so then how do we have 105 in this ordinance?
Because my understanding was that we wanted to give him the amount that he needed to purchase the car. So, you can go down to the 79,000.
No, no, I don't know, no, I will go up. I'm going down.
I mean, you can go from the 105 to whatever you, as long as you have the offset in the general fund, if you're going to do it in general fund, or you choose to take it out of capital.
I just don't understand where the money went from 2016 where he was underspent, that my understanding, and I don't believe I'm-
It got eaten up by other lines in other departments that had overages.
Oh, no, actually, that's not, that's not the case either.
Or an overestimation of revenue.
Well, then what happened?
It could be an overestimation of revenue.
Well, but that 79 is only expenditures, has nothing to do with the revenue. Because actually, is, he's not self, none of the departments are self-sufficient because of the tax revenue. So, you can't look at it as a revenue and expense piece. When you're looking at your expenditures, one of the line items in the original, the original amendment was if allocation department overhead, 57,253. Well, the reason that was, that was under budget at the time was because the allocation had not been made yet. The, the journal entry in the, your accounting records had not been made. So, when you say he was under by 191,000, that really wasn't accurate, because he had 57,000 that accounting hadn't allocated over, which was the conversation that I had a little earlier with you.
I don't think this was stating that he was 191. That, that wasn't the case. He was saying that he was, took all the lines that he had, which was 191, and then we have reallocated, and it would be the 105, is what he suggested was left over.
Yeah, but you also have other lines here where you're giving him money for these other things, at least the way this reads. And, correct me if I'm misunderstanding.
We're, we're taking the whole 191 and redistributing it throughout, the other lines, but the, all he had left over from the whole budget was 105.
Now, the first problem, the, the structural problem with the 105 was this was being applied to a miscellaneous revenue account, when this is a capital expenditure. So, that was the problem.
Okay, so we can rename it something else.
So, that's what we were saying was-
Which was a capital number.
And, and it says capital budget, so this is a capital expenditure coming out of the capital budget. So, that's why the ordinance that was put up for, you know, to revise this is from capital, because that's how we, this was read in the first place, not me, but-
So, how is, how is the proper way to do this, where you're taking 105 and giving it to him without pulling out of the capital?
Capital. You would have to do it in the general fund, and then you would have to see-
But it would be in 2017's numbers.
It would have to be in 2017. You can't go back and do it in 16 because he's not making the purchases in 16.
And what happens is, you can't create a deficit, so you'd have to go through line by line.
You'll have to make up the difference at this stage.
Through the entire budget and find the 105.
Well, we, did we, did we ever fully adopt 2016's budget? Aren't there still some amendments that they're asking out there? Okay, so then when, let's go through the 1, let's go through the 2016 budget, I'm sure we can find 105,000.
You gotta go back to the mayor, wouldn't you?
We haven't, we haven't finalized 2016, correct?
Well, no, the, the mayor said at the beginning of the meeting that 2016 turned up with the 25,000 dollar surplus.
Right, but we have an ordinance that's, again, up for first reading, that'll be coming up, too, that's amending 2016.
Now, that, that, that is just the revenue line items that prevent you from having a finding on the audit.
Well, that, that, we did it in total.
Well, and this is where you and I discussed is very confusing, when you put up an ordinance and you attach the high, entire budget behind it.
Then you don't know what you're, you're voting on, I understand that.
So, it looks like we're amending all of these pages, so that's why I even made a comment.
It's not, you did it comment, too?
That's what we talked about. That's what we had talked about, that we couldn't do just the revenue.
Well, I can't, if we're only amending that one part, why aren't there all these attachments to this budget as if you're redoing it? Because I specifically asked Becky this. I said, "So, are you telling me that we have to go down again every single line?"
These are the actual line items right now going into the audit, is what I'm saying, that we made what we spent by line by department.
You're talking about 2016?
2016.
Okay.
That's actual, right now. Now, she might come in and spot something else, like this didn't accrue.
A late arriving invoice, something that we didn't know about.
So, for instance, if a department had a line item for postage for $1,000, and you spent the $1,000, you can't go back and arbitrarily decrease it to 500 at this point.
You should.
Right.
But my, and maybe it was misinterpreted, my suggestion was-
Yeah, it was.
To amend the revenue line items that, that were causing you the overage, because those, you have actuals, you know, you can compare, and you could make those amendments. And, and bless that piece of it.
None of that changes the bottom line, what we have left at the end of the year.
No, it doesn't. Amending the budget doesn't-
So, you can go back and amend 50 line items, but you're still going to-
It's not going to find you the money to do what we're trying to do.
The problem is, the problem is, we're getting back involved with that lawsuit that Mr. Bureau's trying to look up right now. We're getting back involved with that lawsuit, where whatever money he was supposed to have is his. And now you're saying that we got to go over and do this? I mean, it's, makes no sense to me.
Mr. Bureau.
I, I can't remember the first time I read this case, it was years and years ago. But, you know, the Doyle case is precedent, it's somewhat, somewhat questionable, and here's why. Because it, it says two different things. Thus, the mayor does not have the authority to control the expenditures of the police department. The Chief of Police has the inherent authority to control and administer the day-to-day operations of the police department. Pay attention, the day-to-day operations. This inherent authority includes the authority to control and administer police department property and personnel, which includes police department funds. This inherent authority to control these funds is subject, however, to the requirements that the expenditure of those funds only be made pursuant to or in accordance with specific appropriations authorized by municipal ordinance enacted by the Board of Alderman. So, I, my recollection of what happened in Doyle was that there was a lump sum appropriation.
Not a line item.
Not a line item. Not a line item. And that's, that's what your budgets used to look like. I mean, they were on one page, you know? Just chunk of money to this department.
You would underfund payroll expenses.
And that's, that's what was happening in this case.
You gotta pay.
So there was just a lump sum, and then, I don't know who was the mayor back there. Yeah, that's right. It's, got your name right there, Mayor, sorry.
Fun time.
Sorry, I didn't remember that. So, you know, then the, the case concludes with, we hold that once the mayor and the. And here's another thing that's been troubling me about your budgetary practices, because the, both the Larson Act and these cases keep saying, they talk about budgeting in conjunction, not just with the Board of Aldermen, but the mayor and the Board of Aldermen. And if you go to the Larson Act specifically, the part about the police department personnel, it just, it just flat out says, notwithstanding any other provision of law, the chief of police in Harahan, it's specific to Harahan, shall appoint and discharge police personnel subject to the budgetary limitations of the mayor and Board of Aldermen pertaining to the number of allotted positions for the police department. So, it, all of these cases and this statute keep talking in terms of budget practice involving the mayor and the Board of Aldermen, not just the Board of Aldermen by itself. So I'm, I just throw that out to you as my observation as to the tension that's in these statutes, as to how budgets get presented, how they get passed, and how they get amended in the course of the year. Everything that I keep reading about the Larson Act and the cases that, that deal with it, and there aren't a whole lot, there's just a handful of them, talk in terms of the mayor, conjunctive, mayor and Board of Aldermen. So, you know, when you hear the citizens telling you y'all have to work together, I think there's probably some support for that in the law itself and the way the judges view the Larson Act. It's not just the five councilmen who are responsible for the budget.
The mayor proposes and the, and we vote on it.
Well, you know, but, but it's, it's even, it's even more nuanced than that, because the Local Government Budget Act keeps talking about how you, under a mandatory duty, if there's a 5% increase in anticipated expenditures, you have to amend the budget. And who has to do that? Well, this lady's in charge of, the accountant who's looking at it and saying, this is what I think we're going to get in. She exec, as the executive comes in and says, well, you gotta, we're going to have a 5% deficit, you all have to appropriate or raise taxes or do something like that. So, when you talk about, you know, the, the budgetary powers, it's, it's more nuanced than just you guys get to pass the budget. The cases keep saying it. They keep saying mayor and Board of Aldermen.
And, and I'm not, I'd like to just preface it, I'm not a lawyer, but I've tried to read this at length, because I want to know where my lines are to be drawn and what my, what I can and can't do, because I don't want to have any extra job from anybody else. I have enough on my plate. The Doyle case addressed, and Mayor, you know, they gave him a lump sum, and then the case basically said, yeah, he gets to spend his day-to-day, you gave him a lump sum. But subsequent cases then said, well, then if you have a line item, you have to go by the line item.
Well, the Doyle case itself says that. It says he has to, you have to spend in accordance with specific appropriations authorized by municipal ordinance. So, yeah, once you start to particularize your, your budget, you say, okay, we're only allocating, you know, $50 for copy paper. Well, the $50, you know, when you go encumber it, and you write the PO, that's for the copy paper. And if you bust that, you have to come back to the council, you have to get more money, because you didn't allocate enough for the copy paper. I mean, it's cumbersome, but that's the way modern budgetary practice is.
And if you had 50, if you had money left over, you'd have to spend it on copy paper? Is that what you're saying?
Well, you know, I'll let the accountants deal with that. My understanding of, I, I think there are different kinds of budget practices where. Where either you can be reallocated, or it just, if you didn't spend it in this year, it goes back to the general fund.
But that's why also, under some budgetary practices, they speak to giving a certain, whether it's 3%, 5% fluctuation, that you can sit there and go, okay. It's not, you have $5, and if you do $5.05, you're in trouble. You know, that you, you get some.
I, we've never really been given the opportunity to make an amendment throughout the year, because we don't know where we are. So we don't, councils don't say, let's make an amendment to move money around so that you're within that 5%, because we never know where we are. So we don't make amendments throughout the year. Therefore, that's why there's, there might be wrong numbers here, because we don't know the right numbers. So if we, if, I mean, I don't, so we don't belabor this, Ms. Hammond, how do we fix this? What are our next steps?
Well, the first thing is to, to make a decision, you know, as we said, 2016 is 2016, that's done. And other than any additional entries as a result of the audit, that $25,000 overage, the fund balance, is the fund balance, like that's, you know.
Right, but that's the question which leads me to this ordinance that, again, is up for first reading, that's going to be adopted. This ordinance does, yes, give the city with an ending fund balance of $25,000, excuse me, but we go back into line items that this council has been very vocal on on a number of occasion, that we were not going to advance the increases on these lines. So I'm not even sure 25 is an accurate number, because I'm.
No, it is.
Right.
It's your actual, it, the, the 25's not your budget number, because your budget numbers are totally different.
But if I, if we adopt this, making the ending fund balance of the 25.
You, you can't.
Wait, wait, hold on, I just want to make sure. If we adopt this at the 25, then that's basically saying the council approves the overspending in these line items.
You're saying you acknowledge that it is what it is?
Yes or no? That's what it's saying. If we adopt this ordinance next month, that's up for first reading and we adopt it in May, then that means the council is agreeing to accept the overspending in the line items that we have been very vocal on a number of occasions that we were not going to do. Is, is that what you're telling me? It's, it's. But it's not, but it's not really the actual numbers, because if we adopt and accept the over, and make it in the black of the 25, and it's kind of what I said to the mayor last night, and I'll repeat it again.
Sneaking it.
If we would have lived in the means of the line items in certain departments, our 25 could be 50, our 25 could be 100, and maybe we would have the money to give the chief what he needs.
So what's the, if we, if we don't approve it, then what happens?
It's like we're bringing the cart before the horse here on some of these.
If you don't approve it, at this stage of the game, with the numbers that we have currently, you have an under-budget of more than 5% on your revenue line items.
Well, live within the means of the budget that the council gives you.
That's revenue, that's.
Revenue, I'm sorry, but you said expenditures.
Okay, expenditures is actually okay. So we don't need to amend expenditures technically as part of the law, because you're within your 5% fluctuation for the total general fund, okay?
But if it's a finding, it's a finding.
So, but you will have a, you know, we'll expect a finding on the revenue side, if there's no amendment that passes.
Mayor, when you called me in regards to vetoing this ordinance, you said there would only a structural problem the way it was written, but the money would be there, and it'd be as it was coming out of operating going to. And you're saying now that the emails I sent you are not correct?
Do you have the email with you?
No. Well, we discussed it, we discussed it on the phone, I followed up.
I, I, I had extensive conversations.
So what you're saying is after our conversation, things changed.
No, I just want to finish a sentence.
When I said before, I don't trust you, it's even worse today. Yeah, I don't trust anything you say, because you are very misleading. And Ms. Hammond, met with my secretary myself, said we could do it. And then you're saying you met with two council members, said we could do it. And now we're saying tonight it can't be done.
Can I clarify? Please, please, okay. The budget that you put up for, that passed in the first place, was to the capital project, okay? So when I said this can be done, it's because you're appropriating to the capital project. So the new ordinance is, it just wasn't the, the right line item in the capital project. So we said the account number needs to be changed.
So why don't we just edit the account number tonight and vote on it?
But you also have 2017 written in here, you can't transfer funds one year to another.
You basically would have to take the 2016 section out, and then you could take the 2017 section, amend that one line item, and if that's what you choose to do. Then that, I mean, now that's giving you 191,000 in the capital projects budget though. Instead of, you know, my understanding was what we really cared about was the 105, because we needed to, to purchase police vehicles for the 105.
We can't go back to the 2016 budget, so it'll be, it'll be pulling out of the 2017 budget.
It's coming out of your 2017 capital budget, which is what you intended to do, at least from reading this. You say HBD capital budget. That's where you're, you know, now, can you amend those line items? Yes, you, you could. However, you amend it, it's not accurate, so your actuals are actually going to be off, and you're going to cause yourself to have probably a finding in expenditures in the, you know, in those, those line items.
On the police department, too.
So at the end of the day, this comes out of capital no matter what, it's whether you have the funds. If you, if you truly don't want it to come out of your capital balance, then you have to move money from the general fund, and we only have $25,000 to move out of the general fund. You can't move more.
That's if the ordinance gets adopted to give us $25,000.
No, the ordinance has nothing to do with that 25,000. The 25,000 is your actual. Whether you adopt this, but this ordinance today or not, that's your number. That's your number that you have in your general fund, and you can't change that unless we find an entry or some issue with the numbers that, that needs to be revised.
25's there no matter what, it's just if we adjust the line items.
It would make it short.
No, no, it would still be 25, but we can adjust line items, moving line items around.
Right, and you could choose to, to move things around to get the amount that you need to be able to transfer from the general fund to the capital projects fund, if you so choose to do so.
Let me ask it a simple way. So let's say Ms. Lulu's correct, and the police department had $79,000 under budget in 2016. Where did that money go? It went over the general fund to pay other items that were over budget for the mail. Okay, I got you.
And prior years, when other departments, including your own, were over budget, and, wait, wait, I'm just asking, fading. And that other departments were under budget, then the general fund supplemented that. That's when the general fund is the big bucket. The departments are subdivisions of that bucket.
Are you referring to 2015, when I was given the liability expense and not the revenue, where I was 30 something, 40,000 over budget? Because the department, the city still had the money. The revenue was there. They put the expense in the police department budget, but didn't give us the corresponding money to pay it.
Chief, did the city do that?
So you're sitting there telling me I've been, I'm in over budget the last couple of years?
Did the city do that? Or did, who, who, who did it?
Who hired first? The city hired them, so I guess the city did do it. So somebody just came off the street.
Was the city accountant, CPA, finance administrator, council, or mayor, did they do that?
I have no idea. I just don't know how you, after, y'all, y'all keep contradicting yourselves.
But Mayor.
Wait, wait, you're saying, I'm not the mayor.
But, but the mayor, I meant to say, but the mayor.
You keep saying, once the books closed at the end of the year, you can't move money around. Then in 15, they put a liability insurance on the police department after. The city auditor, okay? That makes you happy? Post waiting edible, put, I don't know, $30,000, $40,000 expense on us, but. Like $80,000 liability insurance, couldn't give us the corresponding. We were still under budget, we weren't under budget enough to count the whole 80,000, so I got dinged with being $30,000, $40,000 over budget. But you just said, once the books closed, you can't be changed.
While we're able to at one time and not now.
So why can't you put an expense on somebody after the books closed?
These elected officials here can't change it. The auditor can, correct? Auditor.
It keeps going around in a circle and circling.
Correct.
To make the books correct. It's not a, you know, the auditor's not arbitrarily changing something. It's, you're trying to reflect the most accurate numbers, and it needs to be accrual basis. So if we know of accruals that need to be made, then we're going to suggest those accruals.
Ms. Hammond?
Yes.
It seems as though we might not get to the answers that we're all looking for tonight, and so we don't belabor this, and it's already 10:35. Would an option be to rectify or remedy this proposal that Councilman Johnston was proposing to amend 2017?
Absolutely.
And just put the additional funds, if this golden number's 105 or whatever it is that.
No, question.
Would we just go ahead and amend 2017 and find throughout the entire city's budget, all departments?
Find where you.
And move the money to the police department?
And you can choose if.
Isn't that like the best way?
That's what, how, if you, if you want to have this spent on this purpose, then you find where it's going to work in 17, and you make, make that, that budget.
You were funded and still move it over to capital?
Go, go through the entire budget, find the money that you want to move to the police department.
If you say, I'm, you know, I'm going to have a, a, you know, an overage basically when I rework my line items, and I'm going to, I'm going to move with a transfer to the capital projects budget, and then, so you'll have an amendment on both sides, you'll have an amendment for the general fund.
Or can you just, you can just move it directly to the police department? Or do you have to put it in a capital and take it out from there?
Well, I, I don't.
No, dude.
Depends on what you want it, right?
Yeah, right. You wanted to go in the general fund capital expenditures line item, then you just move it to, to that line, that account number in general fund.
That's what we've done before, you move it from one line to another.
Can you amend a budget to such an extent to make it so that all, other departments cannot function day-to-day or fun for a partial year?
Well, I mean, you do have to consider where are you taking from, and does that inhibit the operations of the city? You have to look at the whole picture and, you know, which was why I was thinking, if you had the money in capital projects and that there weren't any restrictions or any problems with using that money, that, you know, I mean, I don't know exactly what your 17 looks like and if y'all have the cushion, because normally, cities right now don't have that cushion. We have 160 going into the capital project to begin at 17, and there is nothing budgeted to expend in 17.
What's the fund? What's the capital budget balance for 16?
1.3 million.
That's it total?
But.
Wait, the ending balance in 2016 was only 160,000?
That for capital.
No, y'all have, y'all have a beginning fund balance at the moment in, in the budget of 653,000.
Right.
And you're, and you're budgeted right now to increase that, because you're not using, since you didn't have, you know, a lot of budget line items for your capital for the year, you're actually, right now, budgeted to be 1,029,000 at the end.
Right.
So that's why my suggestion was, if you're going to take it from anywhere for now, unless you have an issue with it, that I don't know about.
Please remember, though, we have the sewer system that everyone's talking about, this 1.3 million, and why would we want to take it from our 4 million and increase the sewer fees to all of the citizens? And Tim, Councilman Bodie is trying to find a way to decrease it, we may use some of that capital money.
If there's restrictions or something that I can't see here, then certainly we have to honor those restrictions first. So if you have money set aside for sewer for those reasons.
I understand that, I understand that we cannot use capital to fund the project of the $4 million or pay back the loan and all of this, but you're telling me that if there's upgrades to the sewer system, like a part or a piece or something that costs 250, $400,000, we cannot use our capital fund to buy that piece of equipment?
We can't. Why?
That's the bond covenants.
But that's, that's, that's different. About bond covenants, we're putting the budget in, we're making it to where it's available. You can still pull extra money from somewhere else to pay on something, even though you have money sitting over here for that type of thing.
Y'all specifically asked that as well. We asked them too, and they said we're not even in a budget. They say we're going to transfer money from the capital project to do whatever project for the sewer fund.
To hold that fund, to, to make the requirements.
To make it right about the ratio.
To make the requirements.
Not that you couldn't buy a piece of equipment, that's the difference.
Right, not that you can't go and.
Like if you had a sewer collapse.
Pull money on top of what you already have there.
I mean, the sewer fund must be self-sufficient.
Correct, and we're not saying that. You keep that money there, but you can still use capital to buy.
Exactly.
It's not the maintenance per month, it's a part.
Exactly.
But, but I think, you know, if we can form, I'd be happy to ask the DEQ your specific questions. If you would like to, I can give you the emails, and then you can, the council can ask these questions to Mr. McFarland, Sierra Trebo, and Mr. David.
I'd actually like to request for them to be here next month, so we can.
It doesn't make sense to me. So you're saying when you expend all the funds in, in this, for the sewer loan, you can't draw on capital to make a repair after that?
Well, that's why, like those gentlemen said, except at 11, I had that section that had upgrades for the lift and all the other stuff. Because they told us, and I didn't have that in there originally, they told us they know that the 4 million does not cover all of the issues that we have.
And that's why they're making us.
And they said I had to have it in there, it has to be self-sufficient to do day-to-day repairs and operations, and the big repairs, the DEQ is not covering.
Correct, but you can still pull money elsewhere for big projects. As long as that fund is still there, you're overspending that fund, which is fine. They, they, they shouldn't have issue with that.
They said we cannot transfer money into the capital or transfer money to the fund to do those kinds of things, unless we did something like rededicate the video poker, which right now goes to capital. We could rededicate video poker to the sewer.
And you can't do it mid-year, you have to do it.
That is just to make it where that the certain numbers are there. That, that's what they, that's what they were saying. To, to make those numbers correct, you have to pull from a general budget and stuff like that. Or you can dedicate the capital, like you said, the video poker to that, to cover those three funds. But if you're already covering those three funds, you can spend extra money to do repairs, as long as those three funds are still there and they're already taken care of. It's not taking that money, putting it to the three funds. It's taking that money and using it over top of the three funds. Three funds are already there.
I, I think we should just get clarification, because it may be that we're misinterpreting. Maybe your understanding might not quite, you know, sometimes you ask the, a different question, you get that answer just to that question. So, you know, and I, I think it should be clarified to make sure you're not violating anything, but it would seem unreasonable to me as a professional in hearing, you know, seeing in other places, you got to be able to put money into the sewer fund when you got major issues.
Thank you.
Like, there shouldn't be, they shouldn't tell us. I can't see where they would say, no, you can't do that major repair that's causing a major issue.
Your fees aren't enough to support the sewer system, but we have this crisis, and you cannot use your capital to fix it. That's ridiculous.
Now, is there some language or something specific that maybe needs a better interpretation? Maybe that's what needs to happen.
Right.
So. So your suggestion is if Councilman Johnson wants to continue with this movement of money, we amend 2017? Yes.
So we'll veto this, and then we will move on from there?
This dies.
That's your suggestion, to veto this, this dies, and.
I mean, at the end of the day, again, it's, you know, it's y'all's decision on how you choose to spend the money. If this is something you want to do, then you find the right place so that you're not, you know, causing an issue elsewhere, and, and you appropriate that. So we just need clarification as that moves through, as to what cause an issue means. What's the definition of that? And we don't need to do that tonight, but you would need to. Right, but obviously, like, you couldn't do it right now, because you would have, because you only have 25,000 in the general fund. If you just did the expenditure piece and didn't have revenue to go with it, then you couldn't use all, general fund to make up the difference. You'd have to find other line items that you could reduce in order to get it to balance, because you are required to have a balanced budget, and you can choose to use general fund balance, but you only have 25,000 sitting there.
You could use the 25 and then adjust stuff to find the rest.
Elsewhere, yes. And you can, you could move from the capital projects fund and say, we're going to do, you know. you know, you could move it the other way if there's no restrictions or something that I'm not aware of at this time. I haven't, I don't know enough about it yet to, to advise you specifically, but, yeah.
I would request the council wait and see when this Lulu finishes our budget for sixteen, how we spent three hundred something thousand dollars between November thirtieth and December thirty-first. I'm sure there's going to be some more money there other than seventy-nine thousand. And I prefer the money I come out of the city capital fund. And again, when my secretary myself had with Ms. Hammond and apparently the two council members had with Ms. Hammond, said it could be done. Now we're saying it can't be done. Then we had the conversation, the mayor called me about vetoing this ordinance. Did I have a problem with it? I said, as long as we still get the money. Said it was the procedural, it had to be reworded, but it would have the same means in common. And now that's not true. And what we said on the phone is not what I, was in my email. Trust, there's no trust. You know, you tell me one thing and then you just said a minute ago, well, an email isn't what, isn't what you said. What we discussed was taking the same thing, the money from sixteen, operating that was under budget and putting it in seventeen capital. And you asked me if I had a problem with that. I said, as long as that happens. And you said, just a procedural. Well, now it's not just a procedural, it's much more than that. And you want, want anybody to trust you? That's why.
Chief, so let me, I'm, I'm trying to get it straight. So you did, you did a good thing by coming in under budget, but you had no numbers to go off of because of the smoke and mirrors budgeting practices we have today. So you had no idea where you at, but you came in under budget. So you getting penalized because over departments went over budget when you could have known that you had that one oh five.
And you could have spent.
December twenty-fifth, and you could have spent that.
Sure.
But don't you understand that that's been my complaint? It's a smoke and mirrors. You don't know, you don't know what's going on. It's, it's all, you know, um, it's just all planned. It's, it's terrible.
Again, for the public, October first of two thousand sixteen, we have a run, or as I'll call it, a chuckbook balance that went through July. And then we didn't get anything for November of two thousand sixteen until March of seventeen. Again, they just said, once December thirty-first of sixteen came, everything freezes. So getting numbers in March, April of sixteen and budget, November, December, doesn't make any sense.
We also, we also had a change in operations that we told the council about and I think, was it, uh, someone mentioned, I forget who, that you must amend, I think it was, um, Mr. Bures, a must amend for change in operations. We had closing of a fund for, because we redid a bond and closing things and it changed the beginning and end balances for sixteen and seventeen. Those changes had to be put in place in order to finish closing sixteen. That was just accepted at the last city council meeting? Yes? So all those mechanics of doing the budget were delayed since October when it was first put up. It could have been voted for. We, we put up a change of operations, we notified. We couldn't change any of the fund balances. It changes the entire complexion of our budget across almost every single department and fund because of those fund balances. And it totally delayed us. It also caused a problem with the financial encode, the system, because not having it early enough, you can't, after a certain date, you can't do certain functions in the next year. So you have to then, for sixteen, because we didn't do it in time, we have to create separate spreadsheets on the side to reflect on sixteen. And these things are complicated and that's why we have Ms. Lulu, who has governmental experience, that's why I've asked Ms. Hammond to be here tonight, that's why we also refer to the city attorney.
If you go back, if you go back and check the record, we didn't get this audit, we didn't get the findings until October because we were told Ms. Lulu was involved with the two thousand fifteen audit, then she was involved with the DEQ loan. Now we're hearing a different story tonight, why we didn't get the financials until October for a different reason.
No, that's not what I, I said. I'm talking about, you're, you're talking about the financials in present and knowing where the closing numbers were for sixteen, beginning numbers of seventeen.
During the year. October first, we got numbers through July. And we were told Ms. Lulu was tied up in a fifteen audit, then she was tied up to DEQ loan.
All these pieces are, and parts rely on one another. One piece doesn't move independently of the other pieces. So in sixteen, in order to get our final numbers for sixteen and do a budget that makes sense for seventeen, we had to apply the change of operations. It is so important that the state statute mandates that we must, that it's not may or shall, you know, it, it is very clear that you must do those amendments. Without those amendments in place, because it took an additional five months or four months, whatever it winds up, it delayed closing out sixteen and starting giving you the numbers for seventeen. That is just, that's part of our difficulty in trying to give you accurate numbers is by us, by that, by that minimally not doing the change in operations that emac, that's mandated by law.
I do have a question.
But then if you go back to budget hearings, October, November last year, the mayor and Ms. Lulu put up an amendment saying, police department is under budget, we want to take out at least sixty thousand, we believe it was eighty thousand. They have financials for our department that we didn't have. How could they come up and say, we know you're going to be under budget by sixty or maybe eighty thousand dollars in sixteen in October? And October I only have financials through July. But they have the figures and not sharing them.
And then I have a question. I have a question.
Yeah, but.
I get what Ms., uh, I get what Councilman Wheeler was talking about earlier. Councilman Wheeler, I thought she was talking about the proposed ordinance for the police that's coming up.
No, the budget.
But she's actually talking about the next one, which is the budget. So how are we able to take it, vote on the budget, amend all these lines that are going to be amended next month? But we can't do this for the police? I don't understand that. We're still, we're still.
So chief, if you want to do the right thing by your department, I, what is the penalty of a finding? Is it just a, 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 a scratchy? Overspend. Overspend. Do what's right by your police officers overspend.
I will not intentionally do it. I took an oath of office.
But that's, that's my question though. How are we going to amend the twenty sixteen budget next meeting, but we can't do this with the twenty sixteen funds for the police? I don't understand it.
That's, that's the point I'm trying to get at.
Chief's contradictory.
This, this, the new amendment to amend twenty sixteen with pending fund balance. I mean, we can, we're going to, we're going to eventually run out of time.
Right. No. Clarification, okay? Normal practice at every other governmental entity that I do, and I, I, I'm eighty percent governmental, okay, is they look at their, their actual operations for the year and they amend the budget to actual, okay? Now, I understand for, for, you don't have to do that. You can choose to amend parts of it. You can do whatever you want to do from that perspective. But that's normally what happens is no matter how it shakes out, you know, you, you, you know, tell those department heads, hey, you shouldn't have overspent, but you go ahead and amend the budget because that's normal practice. Now, that's not something that y'all want to do, that's okay. I'm just saying, like, then you just deal with the findings, you get written up. There's now a, um, a three-year maximum on the findings. If you have the same finding three years in a row, then you got to go to legislative advisory council and go through all that rigmarole and it's a big deal.
It's already been there, done all of that.
So, so, you know, that, you can just have a finding. At the end of the day, it's, you know, you can choose not to amend and just have the finding.
It all goes in with the same as what this ordinance is for what's going to be happening next month, that's why I'm asking it. But if we vote, decide not to vote for the changes for the twenty sixteen budget.
Your actual is still the same. Your actual is still the twenty-five.
I, I understand that.
Fix your twenty seventeen, how you need it to do what you wish to do.
Right.
This eighteen twenty-four though can't be applied. It's not the fact that it's sixteen, it can't be applied. The second half of it says HPD capital budget transfer two. Only the first line is a capital one. And like you were saying tonight, the way it looks like all of these lines are the one ninety-one.
Y'all are kind of contradicting yourself though. You're kind of contradicting yourself. She was saying you can't pull and you're saying it could be done if it was worded correctly, it could have been done, but.
And why can't we do the twenty sixteen budget here when we can do the other twenty sixteen budget?
Right, but what y'all talking about though is not apples to apples.
That you can't roll over money.
Right, that's what I'm saying. It's not apples to apples, but what you're just telling me was that it seemed like.
You can't roll over money from one year to another. You start over on seventeen.
I get it.
The only thing that, um, now, you can still do the two thousand sixteen amendment the way you have it if you choose to do so. It's not based on accurate number, so you're going to wind up with whatever, you know, the difference to the actual becomes. The issue was.
Moving the twenty sixteen.
The way that you worded the twenty-seven one, it was a revenue line item in, in expenditure budget.
But even if, even if it was worded correctly, I couldn't move it over to twenty seventeen anyway.
Right, right. Now you could have done those independent of each other.
But it would have pulled from capital because we don't have the money in general.
Or you'd have to do the transfer to general fund for the source of funds, basically. Whereas capital, capital has the, the, the fund balance to be able to just do an expenditure line item and you'd be okay in capital. In general fund, that won't fly. If that helps.
Little bit.
Can we? Do I have a motion to proceed with the vote to approve the ordinance?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by.
Second.
By Councilman Hewitt. All in, uh, all that approve of the ordinance. Yays? All in favor? Nays?
Nay.
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 Five nays. Ordinance fails, vetoes upheld. Proposed ordinance twenty seventeen, five.
Are you, please, is still defied?
I, I don't like to make a statement before I defer, if you don't mind.
Proposed ordinance number twenty seventeen dash five. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Bodie and seconded by Councilman. Anyone want to second?
It's my name.
Huh?
Yeah, it's my name.
Oh, I'm sorry, Hewitt. Didn't have him in my note.
I thought you were like, don't check in with me.
An ordinance to amend and re-eradine ordinance number fifty-three, Sewage District Number One of the City of Harahan in the Harahan Municipal Code, um, Chapter Ninety, Article Two, Division Two, User Charges, Section Ninety Dash Fifty-eight, Schedule of Charges, Providing for a Change of User Charges for Services Rendered by Said Sewage District.
Councilman Bodie, I believe you.
When we got an email, um, last week, it was basically from Mr. Farland and the DEQ. And just to, just to make it real easy, he says, um, they will not grant us any more money of the DEQ money if we alter or amend or repeal any rate in the, in the ordinance. And it just made me sit back and, and kind of think, one, um, we're going to suggest that DEQ be here for the next council meeting so we can get all our facts straight, you know, out in the open and, and with some transparency. But I have a question and I'm going to read this, Ms. Lulu, because I want to make sure I read it right and, and, and for the record. Ms. Lulu, I've been struggling with the numbers, um, with your numbers over the last month. And last month and a half, and I just can't seem to make them work. Your assumptions seem so inflated, I just can't figure out how or why you use those numbers when the people of Harahan are the ones bearing the brunt of your guesses. For example, one point three million needed for repairs, while at the same time, nine hundred thousand for emergency repairs, all being paid for by the people of Harahan under this program, neither which makes sense under the loan documents I reviewed. Capital funds can be used, which everyone here, I'm think, I'm pretty sure, maybe I'm the only one that agrees that it can, but capital funds can be used for these repairs. So why are we raising the rates of the most needy in Harahan to fund the repairs? We don't know what even necessary yet. What is your availability over the next two weeks? I need to get to the bottom of the assumptions and guesswork before I act on my ordinance. So I would like to set a time and date. And, um, before you answer that, and you can get back with me if you don't want to get back with me today, but I would love to set a time and date. But as I'm sitting here, kind of like a light bulb came on when I'm listening to the chief struggle. And I'm thinking to myself, okay, wow, if we can push all of these rates up on these people and we can force the, the covenants of this DEQ loan and get this rate, we can cover any overspending that we may do. Because we can hold this money in capital instead of using this money in capital to fund projects that need to be done and deduct that project from whatever's being projected in these projections that are given to DEQ that has this rate that's so inflated that we are, we are hurting people. And like I said before, I don't want to politicize this event. I didn't get in this to hurt people. And we are hurting our elderly and we are hurting our needy. And I will have a decision by the next council meeting where we go forward, but I am requesting DEQ here and I am requesting this meeting with Ms. Lulu so I can get a true better understanding of, of what's going on because it's, it's crazy that when you ask for information, you get nothing or bombarded with so much information. It's, you're looking at it, you're going, okay, well, this is, it's almost a slap in the face.
Have you talked to the DEQ?
Uh, I have been working with the DEQ. I haven't talked to them directly as of yet, but I've been working with my numbers through DEQ and I do have a call into them and I'm waiting for a call back now. Um, and that's why I'm choosing to defer because I got this email that's saying, um, that they're not going to give us any more money if we alter or, or amend our ordinance, which I believe that the projections that we have can be grossly reduced. And we can, we can make the, uh, the miller rate, uh, the sewage rate that you, that we have assessed, uh, much more bearable for our constituents.
I'm just suggesting because the bond and the sewer rates and everything is complex, I think it would be beneficial if you had a meeting with the DEQ representatives prior to the May thirtieth.
The reason why we didn't have a meeting with them is because we got ambushed from them, which created a lot of animosity because you told DEQ that they were going to get a lot of blowback from the council before we even had a chance to meet with them at that meeting. And they came in and demanding that, demanding that we adopt that rate right at that moment. So it, it created almost, you know, an uneasiness of even being, wanting to work with them, especially when you had knowledge of this information a year prior and never ever even let us know anything about it. And it's set, now it has set this, uh, 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 bad situation in motion that the citizens are bearing the brunt of.
Tim? Quite frankly, I don't want to rehash old wounds and problems. We have much on our plate to move forward. But this DEQ loan, I will state again for the record, was not addressed under your tenure during the prior term. And the rates weren't set, the, 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 um, funds were not opened and they were not funded and money applied.
And I agree. I just believe that these are excessive.
And I, I have told you in an, an email and personally, I fervently hope that we find something and you're correct. And I think before we do this labored conversation with the DEQ at the May thirtieth meeting, which we will have a lot on the plate, it would be who, you and the council, myself, to have another meeting prior to them coming, actually coming, so that they can be prepared, we can be prepared, we can look at numbers, look at budget and try and run this through and try and run this through to see what works if, as we go. I think that would be a benefit to everyone.
I'm fine with that.
So your motion is deferred?
I'm making a motion to defer to the May thirtieth meeting and we will make, we will take a vote on it at the May thirtieth meeting.
There's a motion to defer proposed ordinance number twenty seventeen five to the May thirtieth meeting by Councilman Bodier, seconded by.
Second.
Councilman Johnston, all in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. Um, proposed ordinance twenty seventeen dash five is deferred. Would you like Mr. Martin to be invited?
No, I'm, I'm fine with the DEQ and I'd like to meet with Ms. Lulu.
He's just our personal representative, kind of nice to have.
I mean, I'm gonna have someone with me, of course, when we meet with Ms. Lulu, because I don't want to, you know, mis, misinterpret what's being said because I see so many other councilmen here, uh, being, they're, they're, they're misinterpreting. I mean, I don't know how many people can misinterpret so much, but I'd, you know, we're gonna meet together with someone that, that can just hear what I'm saying as well. But yes, I would like to meet with Lulu separately of the DEQ and then if we wanna meet with DEQ and everything, that's fine. And then I would still like to have DEQ at this council meeting, next council meeting on the thirtieth.
Lovely.
To, to let them explain what's going on because.
Are you gonna be contacting the, the DEQ to request their attendance?
Yes, I will. Yes, ma'am.
And, um, do, do you want to contact them to request a vote, or would you like us to do that for you?
I'll take care. I will take care of it and keep you in the loop.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm just gonna say upfront, my daughter is graduating next month, so I'll give you the date when I'm not there.
Yeah, please, and I promise you, I won't schedule this.
From college on time. All right. Um, ordinances for introduction.
Um, proposed ordinance number twenty seventeen dash six. Um, y'all wanna do this unanimous or? The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman. This is the, uh. Amending twenty seventeen budget for police.
Who drafted this?
Um, Linda.
Can you sponsor it, please, until so we can get this there?
Proposed ordinance seventeen dash six.
I didn't get that yet, nobody yet.
Yes.
Twenty seventeen dash six, yes, ma'am. Who would like to sponsor that ordinance? I think after the discussion, I'm, when I'm going forward with it.
Fails for lack of a sponsor. Next.
All right, hold on. Um, proposed ordinance number twenty seventeen dash seven. Um, the following ordinance was proposed by Councilman. This is amending the twenty sixteen budget. We have a sponsor.
If there's no sponsor.
I'll sponsor it, but, um, no, I won't get a second.
That, the second's needed when it comes up for vote.
Sponsored by Councilman Benton. An ordinance, amending ordinance number eighteen oh six, the annual budget of revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December thirty first, twenty sixteen, for the City of Harahan, Louisiana. Proposed ordinance number twenty seventeen.
Sponsor?
Benton.
For, no, for the blood.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That was no sudden.
All right.
And then the, the only amendment to this is amending, um, sales tax and grant fund?
More amendments than that.
I'm sorry, I interrupted you, Nicole.
Oh, I know, yeah, no, um, proposed ordinance number twenty seventeen dash eight. Um, the following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Johnston. An ordinance, amending ordinance number eighteen twenty-two, the annual budget of revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December thirty first, twenty seventeen, for the City of Harahan, Louisiana. All right. Um, proposed ordinance number twenty seventeen dash nine. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman.
This is what, um.
Uh, this has to do with the garbage collection. You want me to read it before I sponsor? An ordinance to amend and reordain Section seventy-eight dash thirty-one A, Section seventy-eight dash thirty-two and Section seventy-eight dash forty-four of the Harahan Municipal Code to provide for the collection of solid waste and refuse by the city of, city or contractor selected by it to provide for the imposition of charges for the collection, removal, disposal and recycling of solid waste and refuse and to otherwise provide with respect thereto.
Before we, uh, ask for a sponsor, I ask just for a moment to explain, I, I have met with Councilman Johnston, Councilman Wheeler and have met with Councilman Benton, talked to the city attorney, talked to, uh, Ms. Hammond and Ms. Lulu. The municipal code, in order to place a fee for such things of a service, for example, recycling, we need to have an ordinance so that we can do it. And it needs to tell us how to do it and all, just like any other fee that we have. One does not exist. So recycling cannot be added as a service and know how to mechanically apply a fee and, um, and inform the public of how their bills get tallied without an ordinance. Also, um, and, and correct me if I'm misstating anything, city attorney bureaus, Ms. Hammond, Linda, et cetera, please don't let me interpret for you, this is my simple, uh, understanding. So best, it, it's not just best practice to legally imply, impose a fee. We have to have a legal instrument and that instrument's an ordinance. The other issue is about fees applied for additional service which the city provides now to have also a mechanism for additional service for trash pickup. This isn't about the garbage contract. This is about the service of giving a service for an additional can be in service, which for time immemorial, we have charged, there's two charges. One is sixty-three dollars on the ad valorem and then five dollars a month or ten dollars bi-monthly or sixty dollars annually for, uh, placed on the water bill for the garbage. Some have been charged additional fees. We need a vehicle, an ordinance, because those people got additional service. So if you have someone who's living in a home with no, um, doesn't need the additional service and someone who does need the additional service because they put out a lot of garbage, like the Mazzelli clan does, especially when the children were little, that there is a vehicle in place that allows the municipality to have that charge for that service. Also, I've had a brief discussion with the city attorney, um, so I'm sure he's not ready to speak to this at all tonight, but mentioned that looking into whether it, the appropriateness in, in state statute, uh, for subsidizing service or utility and where does this garbage fall into, um, state statute and ability to subsidize? The city is not allowed to subsid, uh, so questioning whether we can subsidize. Also, the city cannot, um, donate service to one and charge some. So we're trying to create an ordinance or a vehicle that can be amended, um, that took our municipal code and says, how do we charge for addition, for recycling? And how do we charge for additional service of, of garbage? So that's all the intent of this, um, amendment was. I reached out to the council saying, what do you want? It is your choice how we do it. We just have to have a vehicle to do it. And just because the ordinance is up, as is today, it's because I didn't receive any input. Uh, we just gave them something as a framework, framework. Now we're asking, okay, you can amend what's on the table here in this ordinance at the next meeting. We can defer it at the next meeting. I just didn't want, um, months to pass and not have anything and keep going up for first reading, first reading and have it withdrawn. So that, that's the, that's the thought process. And then, and if I have misrepresented any communication, Mr. Harris, Ms. Hammond, Ms. Lulu, anyone, please speak up. So that's the intention. So it doesn't mean that the council agrees what, with the exact numbers or the method because you can, uh, amend, um, the body of the, the, the ordinance.
All right, so who sponsoring?
Okay, so Sue's gonna sponsor.
Benton.
So mayor, you're stating that currently there, there is no existing ordinance that states how the city will charge citizens for recycling.
And extra cans and extra pickups.
And in addition, the fees for additional garbage cans and then an additional on the ad valorem tax bill. We have never had an ordinance to be able to push those fees to our citizens. We just did it arbitrarily?
Not at all.
The ad valorem, I didn't look at, but your current, your current ordinance doesn't even address what you currently charge the citizens. I mean.
Four?
Right now it says it's four dollars, it's actually five dollars. So I was, what I did was I amended.
The pickup fee.
The, yeah, curb side, the curb side of trash and garbage collection. And you have no ordinance at all in place for recycling. So I, I don't know how those charges got imposed, but there was no ordinance that authorized it.
Now, you can understand line eighty-five gives me much anxiety. Eighty-five says, "Any increase in cost to the city for garbage and trash collection and disposal and/or recycling services are authorized to be billed to the user of such services." That's a pretty open-ended comment.
That's actually what your ordinance currently states.
Any increases.
I'm sorry that you guys didn't get the strikeout, underline, red version that I sent on April thirteenth 'cause I had it all set out and you can see exactly what the ordinance is and what it's being amended. But this is what it reads today, right now, this minute. "Any increases in cost to the city for garbage and trash collection and disposal are authorized to be billed to the users of such services." That's what your ordinance presently states.
And what, what year is that from?
I didn't research, that's probably.
I don't know if you had it in front of you, that's what you said. And then also to include any CPI annually, no matter what the percentage is, it just automatically goes to the consumer?
There's a cap, but it does, it's still not automatic and, Mr., please clarify. It's, it says, it, it still has to come to the council if we wanted to change the fee. What we're saying is.
Correct for transparent.
It looks to me like the intent of the original ordinance was to make sure that it was, you know, not a, a revenue loss situation for the city that you would, it was a pass-through, that, you know, you, you know, the citizens would pay for the garbage collection contract, you know, whatever the contractor was charging.
Or other, whatever fees that they applied.
Now, the ad valorem thing, I didn't even, I didn't even research. I was just concentrating on this, this ordinance.
I, I'm sorry that I didn't communicate what you just beforehand on this, but as I'm reading through it, I, I certainly think that, um, recycling needs to be in a separate, in, a separate ordinance by itself just because of, of the, the tenderness of the situation here in the city. They got it, they had to pay it, didn't wanna pay it, now they got it, now they love it, now it's taken away. You, you see what I'm saying? And, and also too, I'd like to see if there is a way to, that, that people who want recycling can do recycling and people who don't want it, don't want it and, and that be charged them accordingly or not charged them. Because last time, you know, everybody got a bin, everybody got charged two twenty, you know, and, and it was a little bit of, it was a little tough at the beginning, um, but we felt that the, the majority of the citizens wanted recycling and, and, you know, so we got a bunch of heat from the people who didn't wanna pay the two twenty a month.
And not honestly, we felt there's numbers that show thirty to forty percent of the population was used.
So, so people, so people started getting used to it and then now we're taking it away. And, and I know that we didn't take it away, but those recycling things all over the place, we took it away. All right, so, so that's what I would like to see if we can maybe put it on a separate ordinance and.
Cause I, I have it as a separate section in this.
Yeah, I just don't like it. I don't feel comfortable with it being tied only because of the wishy-washiness of it and.
Kinda. But I think it's a good question.
Oh, maybe you don't know.
But i- i- if you had to do it in a separate ordinance, it still would be amended to be in the same place, correct?
Yeah, just stick it in a subsection of, of current seventy-eight thirty-one. Yeah, you wanna be able to look at one ordinance and see what all the garbage charges are.
With all due respect to everybody, but.
This is first.
This is just for first reading, can we, can we move on?
I'm surprised we even, I mean, I thought with first reading, you just read the title.
Yeah, you're supposed to read and then keep going.
Yeah, I mean.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No.
What I ask.
I've been through this, I've been through this, that's why.
What I ask of the council.
We talked about your budget for a long.
What I ask of the council is to please forward requests and concerns to, to me and to the city attorney, guild bureaus and to Linda Lulu so that we can be prepared at the next council meeting to speak to all suggestions that you have to whether how it affects the budget, whether the legal parameters, unforeseen consequences, et cetera, so that we can be prepared. So if we could start having that in the next, you know, two weeks, that would give everyone enough time. I, I would hope to be able to start addressing your issues. Okay? Thank you. Next, old business.
There's no old business.
New business.
No, Benton sponsored it.
Sue said she did.
There's no old business, new business number one, appeals board and planning and zoning board nominations.
I'd like to ask the council, please to send me any suggestions of those that you would like to, um, have considered for nomination.
I'd like to mention a name right now.
I have one too.
I'd like to renominate Paul Juwa.
Well, could you just please send everything to me in writing and then we'll put everything through? Because it's gonna be the mayor who's gonna look at everyone's suggestions and then we, we nominate. Then I nominate and then the council, um, affirms or denies.
That's right, John Eflit.
So we're doing it at the May meeting?
Well, I would like your input and to have suggestions from.
Oh, yeah, if we gotta vote on it, I mean, you wanna.
They expire.
Work together.
They just continue though, if there's no one to replace the person, then that place continues. Number two now becomes DNC.
Um, hold on. All right. Number two is what?
Because we amended the agenda.
And you called for that special meeting? Okay.
Yeah, but number two, under new business, it's now the DNC Burgers LLC.
I was wondering, I'm like, what is she putting?
Yeah, no, I have it here. Um, it's a high content ABO application for DNC Burgers LLC doing business as Desi Vegas Prime Burgers and Shakes located at sixteen forty Hickory Avenue. Um, yeah.
Thank you. Chief Walker, have you received the final approval from the state's records clerk?
I signed off on it. Pending approval, will state fingerprint come back. It's, it's normal.
Is that, are you okay with waiting for the, the approval?
I don't know if any time it's happened, we came back, what was different.
City Attorney Bures, is that a problem? Okay. All right, thank you. Um, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Wheeler, seconded by Councilman Bodier, all in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays, motion approved. And I'd like to welcome Desi Vegas to the City of Harahan. Yes! Excellent. Okay, number three?
All right, the Saint Rita Dad, Rita Dad's Club is respectfully requesting permission to block Berg Street from Imperial Woods Drive to Ray Van during the hours of operation for the fourth annual Saint Rita Dad's Club Crawfish Cookoff. The cookoff will be held on Saturday, May twentieth, from nine AM to eleven PM. And they also request to sell beer at the cookoff on, uh, Saturday, May twentieth, from four PM to ten PM.
Chief Walker, Chief Saint Seer, do you have any comments or concerns about the effect, the events or how it affects the department? Are, are your responsibilities?
No problem with it, and we worked it on a detail rate.
We haven't had any issues with this in the past.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
I have a motion by. I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded-
Everybody's rushing now.
Councilman Bodie to approve the permit. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays, approve. Address the council. We're almost on record to finish before the last-
I'm gonna make it. I would like to address, Evelyn Ring, I'm sorry. I would like to address Remy's comment on the river. If the river is high, we may use the hall road, we may use the road covered with grass. Wood materials should never, ever allow dump trucks to run over grass. Wood has three other sand yards to use if the river gets too high. And East Jefferson Levy District should never allow dump trucks to run over grass behind the levee. The area is turned over to the East Jefferson Levy District to keep grass cut. Once dump trucks learn they can run over grass, they will do it whenever they choose. But wood agreed to close the openings with tree curtains. That is important to keep the sand fermenting to community. No openings means the hall road will come to a dead end and can never be used. We're asking the city council to please require wood materials to never use the old hall road, because when they do, we got this whole ballpark all over again. So please make sure that they put in writing or something that they are officially retiring the road, and that we'll never use it. If the water gets high, they can go to another area or just not work there or something. They got to close the openings, and then the hall road will be dead-ended, and it can't go anywhere anyway. So I'm not sure why Remy got up and said that, but he surely shouldn't have said it. Thank y'all.
That's the shortest she ever spoke, Ms. Ray.
I know.
Dear, congratulations.
I didn't even plan on talking, but I had to dress up.
Jason Bruzek, 7204 Stone Lee, I'm gonna go ahead and take up the rest of her time.
Thank you.
I want to start out by saying, Ms. Hammond, I think, you said something at the beginning of, from about two hours ago. You said, "Look, let's just get together and get them the information." And you were saying that we need to get the council members the information. I agree wholeheartedly. I think half the problem that the council has, and the poor chief has, is that they keep squawking and begging for information, and they're just not getting it. We've heard it from the chief repeatedly, time after time after time. And I actually, Gilbert was asked about the Doyle decision, and he stopped reading it, probably what I think is probably the most important part, and that's the holding of the decision. And the holding was that we hold that once the mayor and aldermen have budgeted and appropriated money for the police department, the authority to allocate it of these funds rests with the elected chief of police. So if he chooses to allocate his funds into capital or whatever he may want, I don't see how you can stop him. He has special budgetary requirements under the statutes. He has his own thing to do under Larson Act, and I'm sure Gilbert is happy to talk about that. But my concern is, is if he has $105,000 in October, he has no idea how much he has November, December, he certainly didn't in June. How is he going to properly allocate his funding for the year? He needs that information, and so do these folks up here. And I'm going to put this on the mayor, Mayor Micali, you work for them. You work for this council and that police chief, because they are our representatives. And so it's incumbent on you to act as a servant leader and serve these people so that we, the citizens, get served. And Chief, I think you're doing a fantastic job. I've seen the news clippings and the press where, you know, Harahan's the safest place in Louisiana, which is a heck of a feat, by the way, especially with what's going on, you know, close by in New Orleans. So I want to commend you in that you were able to do all of that despite not knowing where you are with your budget and not having that information. So Ms. Hammond, I don't know what you make per hour either, by the way, but between Ms. Lulu at, I don't know, I'm gonna guess at 200 bucks an hour, Gilbert and you, I think we may be burning somewhere in the order of $600 to $700 an hour on the three of you to be here so that folks can ask you questions over stuff they should already have.
Yep. Amen.
And that baffles me, because that means tonight alone, we're looking at $2,500 to $3,000 of my money being spent-
Time's up. Motion.
Because of incompetence. Thank you.
Second. I have a motion to extend time by-
How much?
Three minutes. Three minutes by Councilman Hewitt, seconded by Councilman Wheeler, all in favor.
Yes.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays, motion passes.
Thank you very much, and I will try to be a little bit more brief. So basically, what I've heard from you is that you are applying a spend it or lose it analysis on the chief. And if it's a spend it or lose it, whether it's by accrual, cash, or this all of a sudden, hey, no, it's under, you know, curtain number three, it's the modified cash, whatever. If it's spend it or lose it, I think Tim Bodie said it, he has no incentive to save a dime of my tax dollars and roll it into the next year. We need to create that way. So I'm asking the council to please work to create that way, so that if he saves money, he saves my tax dollars, he can roll it into the next year for maybe a larger purchase. Maybe he goes and gets a, I don't know, armored car, whatever it may be.
Knight rider.
Yeah. So thank you very much. I believe that you, based upon the holding of Doyle, which I'm sure you're familiar with, I was surprised that that holding didn't come out tonight. But I think you, as the auditor, and Ms. Lulu, as the accountant, need to be aware of it, because that, I think, trumps just about anything else. It is a Fifth Circuit decision, which means it rules us. Third Circuit, or whatever else that Mr. Bures referenced from that other case, I'm sorry, I'll take Doyle any day. Thank you.
TommyBuddy, 7208 Stone Lee Drive, and I don't want to follow Jason anymore. I'm gonna start out with a question I asked earlier about the two sewage contract bids. I'm happy to see that we're moving forward with the work, but I still haven't heard anyone describe the bid process. I have a limited understanding of the state of Louisiana's bid process, and unless the contract is 25 or 40 million dollars, it has to go off a hard bid.
Which it did.
Good. So it was advertised. Thank you very much.
And also, the letters were sent to the council, that the layers that I was trying to get Mr. Hopmeyer to explain, that we have to send it out to bid, then they have to check our process and approve the process.
The DEQ bidding, right?
Yes, the DEQ, thank you. In order to even to move forward.
Good, good. Thank you. We've spent a lot of time tonight talking about miscommunications and misunderstandings of financial information. Number one, I think, as a financial professional, I think what's going on with the city in delivering timely financial statements to the users is not acceptable. If I were the CFO of this company, I'd be making big changes. And I've done this in the past. I've gone in and made big changes where we couldn't get numbers, because everybody needs them, and it's not just the chief, the mayor, the council. Those numbers are for us, the citizens. So just a general statement, and I know there's been reasons why the professional time was allocated to other work, but mayor, there isn't anything much more important than timely financial statements. So if you could alter your priorities to getting the timely financial statements and maybe pushing something else back, I think it would serve you, the council, the chief, fire department, and the citizens well. A lot of the issue tonight, and a lot of past issues, had to do with an accounting policy that the city adopted some time ago of allocating overhead. You know, that's not a bad practice in a for-profit company, where you want to measure performance of a profit-making division, and you don't want to give them a free accounting department, a free HR department, a free CEO, a legal department. But in this $6 million organization, it's absurd. The money we've spent tonight alone talking about it proves the absurdity of it, the confusion it causes. Every time these journal entries have to be made, they're made by a third-party consultant. So I would suggest that the city consider modifying their accounting policy and not allocating overhead. And in addition to that, it distorts the true administrative cost of the city. How do I know what the mayor and the HR department, how do I know what city hall costs? So I might go have to go add up a bunch of numbers and pull data from different departments to see what this building costs to run. So I'm gonna say that it makes, it's a best practice in certain instances, maybe in a very large city, maybe in New Orleans it makes sense, doesn't make sense here, guys, so I'd suggest you change it. And I'm gonna-
Amen.
I'm gonna third the comment. Tim stole my thunder, and Jason stole it too. I think the current accounting, lack of timely accounting, provides a disincentive to the chief, who's a very honorable person, to anybody in that role to try to live within his budget, because it worked to his detriment. So Chief, thank you for your comment about you're sworn to do the right thing, but this process, these late financial statements, the process is broken. It's not serving anyone well, not serving the mayor, the council, or the police chief or the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Terri Valenti, 191 Colonial Club Drive. I won't talk about accounting, because all of that has just gone over my head. I do wish that there was some way that some of these issues could be ironed out before they come to the council meeting. I think citizens have asked for that many times before. Chief, I keep hearing the same thing from you for the last, I don't know, five meetings. You repeat the same questions and same problems. I, I don't know what the answers are, but some kind of way, you need to find a way to get your answer so that you're not repeating them. You've repeated some of the same issues tonight, two or three times. And you've also repeated that you don't trust the mayor. And here's where I have a real big problem, and I'm emotional because I supported you, I worked on your campaign. I wanted you to win, I was proud of you for winning. But you point your finger at the mayor and say you don't trust her at every meeting. And you've got volunteers sitting in your office churning out diatribe against the mayor every single day, from your very own office, about the sewer system, about the recycling, about every city issue but the police department. Tonight, you've got a volunteer sitting behind you or supporter that's been posting from her seat, where she's sitting with your, one of your top officers, and she's posting on Facebook negative information about the mayor, that she's a joke. She also stated she wanted to put her in a pit of snakes last week. Your other gentleman that sits up here with you and sits in your office every single day also comments on those posts against the mayor. How can you say you don't trust the mayor? I've never heard her say anything negative to you, ever. She's been professional to you. You don't sound professional when you throw something that the citizens gave you, she handed it to you, but on behalf of the city, recognizing you for what you, the awards that you just won, and you pitched it back up there like a child. You need to be a leader. You need to be the leader that the people of Harahan voted for when they voted for you. And you're not so honest when you say that this mayor you don't trust, when you are, you have people on a daily basis trying to rip every decision she makes apart. The same lady tonight posted that the mayor refused to give Eric Chadelane a key. I heard Eric say from the back of the room that he didn't, he didn't get the key now, that he would get it later.
I have a motion to-
How much time?
Three minutes. Three minutes from Sue Benton. Do I have a second? Really? We don't, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. I wanted to thank Mr. Bodie for something, but that's fine, Mr. Bodie.
I'm Kim Hasney, 110 OK Avenue, and I'll be glad to finish up what she has to say. I was absolutely horrified. Chief, I have total respect for the police department. I think what you guys do put their lives in danger, and what you do is very honorable. But for any city official to tell another city official at a public meeting that you don't trust them, makes me not trust you, and makes the citizens feel like, what is going on in this city? I didn't know about the Facebook postings, but I've been hearing things. I've watched Dana, I've watched Carrie, and I've watched Craig, and I've watched Tim, who maybe is advertising for Phil's Grill, I'm not sure, but-
Me neither.
I mean, you know, I don't know what that means, but is, maybe he's opening a Phil's Grill in Harahan, but, you know, the dirty looks, the comments, the woman who stood up and said that the mayor was a liar and a cheat in whatever she said, my gosh, do we not have any respect for our community? We are citizens, we are taxpayers. All of you, every one of you, need to be ashamed of yourself, except for Chief St. Seer, who actually was speaking with reason tonight, instead of going over the same, why don't y'all get an accounting seminar so you can learn the rules of accounting and get it straight before you come and argue it for two hours in the public and waste our money? This is our citizens' money. As Mr. Bodie put out, yes, we are paying for this, but you serve at our disposal, the citizens, not just the mayor. The mayor serves for you, everybody's supposed to serve the City of Harahan. We are a community that is being torn apart, and I'm very emotional about this, because I love this community. But we're being torn apart by all of you, and I'm sick of it. You should, all should be ashamed of yourself.
Robert Johnson, 6735 Riverside Drive. We've been hearing each month about what Wood Materials is proposing to do with their road. It would be very nice if we could hear what Wood's vegetation planting plans are. We need native trees planted that are appropriate and can grow quickly and can block the sand that blows from their operation. I hope that Mr. Donley will advise council and citizens of Harahan of when appropriate vegetation is to be planted next month. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donley. We will now close, address the council, secretary's report.
Secretary's report for March, total revenue 576,853.28. Reports.
Reports, Chief Walker.
Stats for the Harahan Police Department for the month of March 2017. We had 543 calls for service, we handled 13 auto accidents, we issued 94 citations, 127 charges. We had eight patrol requests. We had seven narcotics arrests, type of narcotics arrests, 12, well, eight, I'm sorry, eight felony, three misdemeanors, one city. Other arrests, 54, other charges, 112, which were six felonies, 77 misdemeanors, 13 city, and 16 traffic. We had no murders, no rapes, one simple robbery, two simple burglaries, one simple, one non-residential burglary, one attempted burglary, no motor vehicle thefts, no attempted motor vehicle thefts, non-harceny thefts, and 16 assaults. Mary, you gonna be in tomorrow? I have a grant form that needs to be signed, if we can bring it over tomorrow sometime during the day.
Yeah, I'll sign it.
Pardon?
You can-
Okay. All right, thank you.
Is there a deadline, Chief?
We just gotta, yeah, I think we have two weeks.
Because I will be in and out, Chief. Is there a problem if you get it back on Monday?
That's fine.
Chief St. Seer.
I feel like Rodney Dangerfield, I get no respect.
You do.
Month in, month out, Chief Walker gets to go ahead of me. I'm trying to figure this out because his name starts with a W, mine starts with an S, so I should go first. F is before...
You got...
P.
The clock is ticking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You still don't get any respect.
Still no respect. All right, I report for March 2017, seven public assistance calls, three fire alarm calls, two structure fires, one washed down, three vehicles with accident, three vehicle accidents with injury, three investigations, and one trash fire. I'd like to report to the council and the mayor that we have received and finished and returned the packet for Property Insurance Association for the rating that was due on the 5th of this month. Are they gonna come out and do our field inspection on July 18th and 19th? And I'll have a full report for y'all after of their findings and what I think we need to do for the future of the city and the fire department.
And can you tell us about the good news from the...
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, we were able to, this week, hire a fireman. He's gonna start next week. We're very happy to do so. We've been waiting to replace these positions for a while, and this is the first one of the two. Hopefully, we'll get to do the second sometime in the near future. But this is a big step. This is what we need the most, is help. We need manpower. There was one other thing I wanted to talk about.
Fundraiser. Fundraiser.
Oh, the fish fry. Fish fry was awesome. Had plenty of, plenty of...
That's food.
Plenty of community help.
I'm gonna tell you, any fundraiser, we're gonna ask Councilman Wheeler to direct traffic. And she deserves a commission, I believe, from the police department to help with traffic patrol. She was great out there.
She was great. You know, we had our neighboring fire department come by and give us help all day long. You know, just, just being there to support us was awesome. A lot of people from the community came out. We got good reviews on the fish, so we're not gonna change a thing for next year. They'll be exactly the same. Of course, different fish, but, anyway. So anyway, I'll be giving you a report on the rating and what I think the future looks like for the fire department pretty soon. You know, we have implemented Firehouse software. That's something, you know, our software system has been down for like six years at the fire department. We've been dead in the water. We've been tracking things by paper and going back to how we did things when I first started the department and worked so hard to get our first computer with the chief. I remember chief saying, "What would you need a computer for?" Well, after a few years of having one, we figured out what to do with it, right? And we did pretty good with it, and then our system went down. But anyway, we're building that system up.
He now likes to text messages to the former fire chief.
Yes. So...
He's moving up.
Tug, am I correct, did you also save 100,000, come in under budget by about 100,000?
We did come in under budget by about 100,000. I don't quite understand it at this point.
I think you should be commended for that, as well as chief.
Yeah, it, I appreciate that, but I can assure you, that wasn't on purpose.
It was by accident.
Yeah, that was definitely by accident.
Because he lost that.
I'll try to, I'll try to do better next year. I'd like to come in a lot less under budget, but, you know, and that's something that we need to maybe sit down and look at and get some of the answers of why, and hopefully you have a pretty good grip on that and what's going on, because we could really use that money to put towards, hey, that would've put another fireman to work. And that's what we need. We need boots on the ground. So, okay? Thank you. You know, have a good night.
Thank you. Ms. Hewitt, Councilman Hewitt?
No report.
Councilman Bodie?
Just real quick, I just wanted to, just jump onto something Mr. Bodie said. Mr. Bodie, you know, you said that the chief, it was a detriment to the chief's department because he didn't get to use that money. The truth is, it's a detriment to the officers, because these people make so little bit of money, it's so terrible what we pay them, and yet we put them out on the street every single day and night to protect us. Other than our teachers, our police officers, and our firemen are the most important people in our community, and it's a shame how those three people in our community always get treated with, you know, not fairness when it comes to compensation. Also, Ms. Hasney came here and chastised the council, and that's fine, she has every right to do so, but I think Ms. Hasney, she heard, but she didn't listen. We wouldn't have all of these financial discussions if we had the financial material that we needed on a time to where we can come in here and not have debate over answers that we don't have. If we had it in hand prior, we could have made decisions way prior to where we are. And I do agree, you know, agree with you. We're very frustrated as well. And we've been asking for something for a long time that we're still not getting, so the only forum that we have to come to with transparency is this forum. And I'm sorry that these meetings go like this, but this is where we have to do our bidding because we have no other choice. I mean, this, I've never, I've served under two mayors, I've never had to put a public records request in for my own information. It's insane, and I refuse to do it. She's either gonna supply me with the information that we're supposed to have, or we'll sit at these meetings like this all night. The last and final thing, which is actually positive, I'm working with a citizen in Harahan, by the way, who is working with Chef Duke from Cafe Giovanni about opening a high-end restaurant here. And so that's kind of exciting. And so I just want to say thank you, good night, and I'm always around if you need me.
Councilman Johnson?
I just wanted to talk about this because it's gonna be before our next meeting next month, but the same REIT that has clubs is hosting the Crawfish Bowl, Crawfish Cook-Off next month, May 20th, four to 10. Come on out. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Wheeler?
Yes, I would just like to say, because this will get advertised before our next meeting, my beautiful daughter will be graduating Mount Carmel next month, May 22nd, so I wanted to wish her and, of course, the class of 2017, best wishes, and I cannot believe my babies graduating high school, so...
Where is she going?
She's going to Southeastern for nursing.
Oh. So I know somebody who can help, or can you... Councilman Benton? I just want to say that it is, even though it's difficult, I personally take it as a privilege to represent every citizen in this community. Whether you're for me, against me, have no opinion. This council, and I, the police chief, everyone here, we work for you. That's who we need to serve. And I'm gonna agree with the sentiments of Ms. that have been said tonight. We need to take down the rhetoric, we need to take down the volume, and really try and do a little bit more homework in the prior to getting here and work together. I was very encouraged this week that Councilman Johnson and Councilman Wheeler came and spoke with me. It's a beginning again. And Councilman Benton, I thank you for always challenging me, and you wouldn't believe how many times she'll tell me, "Are you sure? I think you're wrong. You better prove this to me." So I'd like to thank everyone who's willing to talk. There, I want to say I agree about getting financials on a timely manner. We are, we've, we have crossed many hurdles and financial hurdles. We had a huge problem with the DEQ loan, a threat of default. We had an overwhelming deficit. We had a budget that was discombobulated. We've had to rebuild a city piece by piece, and it's taken a little doing. And I'm very proud of all the hard work people have put in. There's not a lot of, there's not many individuals who would come to this city and potentially face what I call the fire and squad. That's meant to be taken lightly, not, you know, viciously. And they put themselves out there, and I thank them, all of our professionals, all of our employees. And I, the council does it too. I do it. You have to just take what's coming. So I'd like to just thank everyone, and we're just about done. So now, pay the bills.
All right, bills paid in March, 352,062.38.
No executive session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
I have a motion on Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Wheeler, all in favor. Any opposed? We have five yeses, zero nays. And Councilman Wheeler, did I make the three minutes before?